Good morning students, welcome back to Community Health Nursing. So in the last classes we were seeing regarding the health committees. Today we are going to move into the various five-year plans. So as an introduction, let us see how the five-year plans has been started, from when it has been started. So when we look into the planning commission of India, even in the nineteen thirties, it has been started by the British government. So during that period, we all know that India was under the rule of British. So during that time, they have given the authority to the states during nineteen thirties and later from nineteen forty-four to forty-six, they had a board of colonial government of India during the British period. And later when we become independent India, that means after nineteen forty-seven, we have started planning for our own planning commissions. Thus finally on nineteen fifty, March fifteen, on nineteen fifty, March fifteen, we have established the planning commission under the chairmanship of Prime Minister Jawaharlal Nehru during that period. So after the establishment of the formal planning commission, it started to report directly to the Prime Minister of India. Because we become independent, we got the freedom, so finally everything has been into the hands of ours. So as a democratic country, we had a proper planning commission from nineteen fifty onwards, under the chairmanship of our first Prime Minister Jawaharlal Nehru. So the looking into the structure, planning commission actually it included a chairman, a deputy chairman and even five members and functioned through program advisors, general secretariat and technical divisions. Already I have explained before the committees, I had a small introduction about the various committees and about the five-year plans. So during that time I have told, so never think that this planning commission is only run by the Prime Minister, never. He is ultimately the chairman or the head, but there are so many people working behind that. Not only the health professionals, so many para-health professionals and even outsiders, that means the technicians, statisticians, advisors, program committee members, so it's a group work actually. A senior officer headed each of this division, each of this division separately, they all will have a separate senior officer also. The major task of planning commission was to formulate the five-year plans to guide the country into the developing path. So even in exam if they are asking planning commission, that means the major task of a planning commission is to formulate the five-year plans in order to guide our country into a developing path. The main aim of a planning commission is development of our country. So the planning commission adopted a decentralized approach in planning process in view to achieve decentralized district planning. So what do you mean by decentralized approach? Decentralized approach already two-three times I have told. Decentralized approach means from the central government, never think that only they are hundred percentage controlling. The central government is giving the authority and even they are allotting the fund and even they are giving the freedom to the state government and from there to the district administrators and from there to the urban rural into the periphery village administration, Punjab Raj Institution still there. They all are having that, that is known as the decentralized approach. Then only we can see the development in the periphery root levels. I hope now it may be more clear for you because already Sister Smita has started with that particular unit. So you have studied about central government, state government, how the things are carried over in each decentralized areas into. So let us see what are the functions of a planning commission. So in nineteen fifty, I have told the first planning commission has been started, in nineteen fifty they have started the work. So the main function was the assessment on existing resources of the country. Like see, if if the commission assess how much resources we have, then only we can properly plan it. So the resources includes manpower, money, material, all these things are really included. So whatever resources we naturally have and where are the deficiencies we India is facing, that should be overcome by the government. So then only they can improve in each five-year plans. So it was the first function. So here you can see the picture of the first planning commission under the chairmanship of Prime Minister Jawaharlal Nehru. So it is a file photo. So like this, in a small table conference, it has been started in nineteen fifty. Now we have a very big infrastructure and it has grown very largely, the planning commission. So let us see what are the other functions. So the first function is assessment of existing resources. Second one is formulate the plan for the appropriate and balanced use of resources of the country. So it really formulates, it formulates the plan for the appropriate and balanced use of resources. See whatever resources, even though it is natural resource or artificial resource, whatever, if it is money, manpower, material, anything, it should be wisely used by proper planning. Appropriately and in a balanced manner it should get used, otherwise it will lead to misuse and there will be scarcity of resources at the end. Next function is setting the priorities. They set the priority and allocate the resources in a proper manner in each area. See even, that's what, there comes the importance of vital statistics. So I hope you all know what is vital statistics, otherwise health indicators even we can tell. So all state tillam, ettratolam, a morbidity rate, mortality rate, which state is performing backward, which is high performing state, which is low performing state. So based on all the health indicators, based on the mortality, morbidity and all the vital statistics, based on the communicable disease indexes, based on the sanitation, based on the educational level literacy of each state, based on all this I have told, the states has been distributed into high performing states and low performing states. By looking into that, by looking into their rural and urban structure, then only the priorities will be set, then only the resources will be allotted by the central government to each state. So you never think that all the twenty-nine states get the same amount, all the states get the same priority, no. The central government will first do the assessment, then they set the priority, then they allow the resources in each five-year plans. It alerts the factors that may impede the process of economical growth. Of course the the planning commission, the one of their function is, they always alert the factor, what is what is the hindrance factor or what is the barrier of our economical growth. It will be find out and all these factors will be identified and they will make a proper solution for that. Next one is to decide upon the equipment and the technology required for the implementation of plan. So they decide what type of equipment or what type of technology is needed so that the proper planning can be implemented in each of the area. This planning is also done in five-year plan. Then next is the continuous monitoring or the assessment and feedback on each state, each stage with appropriate changes and modifications in the policy. So they always make policy from the central government, but see the five-year plan or the planning commission, they continuously monitor it. They take the assessment, they take the feedback, how it is progressing, what are the appropriate changes or modifications should be done with the policies. You never think that once a policy is set or once a national health program is set, it is not for fixed or granted. They need changes, when because theory and practical is always different. So when the, when they sit there and when they plan the things and when it is getting implemented into the periphery area, they may face so much of problems. So they do the assessment, they do the feedback and they do the modifications and changes in this policies. All this is done by the planning commission and they make interim plans and recommendations to make appropriate changes in the existing policies and to seek advice from central government and state government. So they recommend the plans and the recommendations, all this, they to make the appropriate changes. They do the changes in the policies, in the existing policies and even they get the advices from each state government also. So the central government will ask them, if any problem is there means the state government can tell to the central government, this is the problem we are facing, so we would like to change like this. This area we need more resources, this area we need more manpower. So like that, each state government also can give the advices. So both the central government and state government, that's what I told always. Everything is a planned process, especially health sector is a teamwork. So from the central state, all these things should work together. All these things will be coordinated and headed by planning commission. So the planning commission, it plays a mediator and facilitating role in the best interest of all the state and central governments. All the state government and the central government, everything, they they do the work collaboratively. So the planning commission act as a mediator or it facilitate the best thing to happen to each state under the central government. So I hope you have got an good introduction about the planning commission and what are the various functions of planning commission. So let us now enter into the first five-year plan. Let us start with the first five-year plan. So when we, as I have told, the planning commission, one of the main work of the planning commission is having this five-year plans, for the every five year, they have a particular plan for the development of the country. So in that, we are only going to see about what is the health sector planning. In health sector, what are the things happening? So already in the previous classes, I have told, in the health sector, what all things they were concentrating on. So what all things in the health sector planning they were concentrating, I hope you all remember, otherwise you have to review it back. What were the things? They have divided it into various seven sectors like water supply and sanitation, control of communicable diseases, medical education, training and research, then medical care like hospitals, dispensaries, primary health centers, then public health services, then family planning and indigenous system of medicine. These all are included in the health sector planning. So we are going to see what are the health sector planning in each of the five-year plans. So the first five-year plan, it happened in nineteen fifty-one to nineteen fifty-six. Even I have given you which are the years and which all the things in the introductory class I have given you from from the first five-year plan to the twelfth five-year plan. So few things you have to buy heard here in this unit, I know that it is little difficult maybe or you may be having, have to take little pain to remember the things, but try to make your own small notes and remember the years. So in that, we can see that since the time of independence, India concentrated mainly on bringing about a fast and balanced economical development. So see after the independence, India was struggling to make, to stand on its own leg. So during that time, they have to balance the economical development. So under the guidance of Jawaharlal Nehru, the first five-year plan has been started. So it was the plan was from nineteen fifty-one to fifty-six. So you can see a total of two-hundred-and-six-point-eight billion money was allotted in the first five-year plan for the developing and modulatory factors. So I will show you the table how it was allotted. So the first year, first plan initiated in the year nineteen fifty-one with the focus on primary sectors. See always you have to remember, the first five-year plan, it focused on primary sectors. So the primary sectors, that means they were looking into the, like all the primary sectors wherever it is importance is needed, like the basic things or the primary care aspect to reinstate, to reinstate the financial system and overcome the pressures of inflation. See the objective is they have to stand on their own financial system and establish this transport system and enhance the state of availability of food and raw material. Because see, till that time, everything was under the control of British and they had made so many things in India, of course, the railways, all the things. So once they have gone back, they have taken many of the things which is movable. So we had some scarcity of resources during that time and even the economical instability also. So the financial stability, maintenance of the establishment of proper transportation system and the availability of food and raw material, these all were main objective of the first five-year plan. Then to promote the progress by activating substantial development programs. So they were looking into little substantial, little long-term developmental programs, a gradual progression or gradual improvement they were looking into. To initiate measures of social justice on a wider scale. So they would like to give a social justice because see, the first government has been formed after the independence. So of course they have to gain the confidence or the trust of the people. So social justice is very, very important, that means the equality, the justice should be given to everybody, urban, rural, even the middle class, poor class, all the men, women, everything, everybody should be taken care with a proper justice manner. So the social justice, they have initiated so many measures. Then to establish relevant administrative changes for development purposes. See till that time, all the administrative level members were from British government. So now they have moved, so now India has to make their own or they have to establish their own administrative changes should be made into, made into the government system. So they all, these all were the main objectives they have laid or put forward for the first five-year plan. So let us see, in the table, we can clearly see, I have told around two-two-hundred-and-six-point-eight billion was allotted during the first five-year plan. So let us see how the money was allotted. So it is very clearly in this table, it is given that the irrigation and energy, twenty-seven-point-two percentage like that, each of the sector, each sector, see. That's what I told, never think that the full money is going into health sector. So each of this because everything, the whole development aspect, the planning commission is looking into. In that, one of the sector is only health sector. Under that health sector, as I have told, there are six to seven subdivisions also. So this is the allotment of the budget, you can read and you can even write down if you want. See all these things are not available in the K park. That's why I am taking from this textbook, Shamala Reddy Manivannan textbook, especially for community health nursing. So if you want, you can make the notes of this, a running note in your notebook because these topics are not available in K park. So let us see what are the various aspects concerned to enhance the health. So in this they have given, because primary level, as we have seen, the first five-year plan, they given importance for primary level. So they given importance for water supply, sanitation, eradication of various communicable diseases, MCH activities, health education and even services for strengthening the rural health infrastructure, sub-centers, PHCs, the preventive healthcare among the rural population by using mobile units, the health small units, health unit should be there. Then family planning, then self-sufficiency in drugs and equipments. So these all were the various areas they have enhanced for the health in the first five-year plan. So let us look into the, what was the second five-year plan? So second five-year plan was between nineteen fifty-six to nineteen sixty-one, fifty-six to sixty-one. So the second five-year plan, in that, let us see what are the main things they have aimed on. So the main things what they have aimed, this first one is the national annual income to increase five percentage. They were more focusing again into the finance because see, in order to have any development, the first thing what government needs is money or the finance. So that one, then additional employment facilities for around ten million people. Because they have seen that unemployment was one of the problem, so they have focused on that. Then rapid industrialization with specific attention to the production of iron and steel so that the industries can come up. Then only more job opportunities will come up, we need more factories, we need more industries. Because during till that time, all British people was handling, they get the raw materials from their side. But now India has to make by their own, so they were more focusing into the industrial areas, the production of steel, iron, all these things. Then empowerment of people by reducing inequalities in income and wealth. So they were empowering the people, they want to, they want to improve the status of poor people, the poverty. From that time, government is trying to eliminate poverty. Now so much of improvement happened in India, but still we can see some of the areas having these issues. So they were looking into the equalization of income and wealth for all the people. These were the main aims and the objectives were establishment of institutional facilities to serve the people, development of various technical manpower through training programs. So they have trained the people for various employments or the manpower should get first training for that. Then measures to control communicable diseases prevalent in the community. So during that time, we all know that we had smallpox, so so many, so many communicable diseases were there during that time. So they were having more measures towards the control of communicable diseases. Then create awareness on environmental hygiene and on family planning. Because during that time also, they were foreseeing the things like population, if the population is increasing rapidly, then there is a limitation of the resources, economy and the development. So of course they have given more awareness during that time onwards, they have created awareness about the family planning, need of family planning, environmental hygiene and various other supporting programs. So these all the things, they have given more focus on the second five-year plan. Third five-year plan has been started in nineteen sixty-one to nineteen sixty-six. So in the third five-year plan, the large importance were given to the development of the agricultural to improve the production of rice. Because due to the economical threat during that time, as you all know, India has faced two small wars. That one is Sino-India war, that means Indo-China, the same thing is known as Indo-China. So during that time, there was a little, that means even though they have planned so many things in five-year plan, during the third five-year plan, this two small war has came up like Indo-China war and Indo-Pakistan war. So because of that, there was a small brought down or there was a small reduction in the GDP rate, that is two-point-seven percentage it was. What is GDP? Gross domestic product. I hope. So please excuse me for that. So what is GDP? GDP capital. Gross domestic product, that means then only we will be able to assess, by gross domestic product will be able to assess the economy and the growth of the country. So the economical rate has been reduced to two-point-seven percentage because of this two small war. Even though the green revolution in India has, for the agricultural field, they have started in like nineteen sixty-five to sixty-six. During the last one year, there was green revolution in India for the development of agricultural activities. And the third plan initiated a total layout of three-hundred-and-forty-two crores and about two-hundred-and-ninety-seven crores to all the states they have allotted and the rest was only with government. See each of the states, they have divided and given this much of money. So this is about a third five-year plan. And in the third five-year plan, let us see what was the aims they have focused about. So during the third five-year plan, it is easy for you to remember. So what was the aims? First one, to maintain five-to-six percentage annual increase in national income and to sustain the same in future plans. It is all self-explanatory, if I if I explain again and again, it will make you bored only. So the points are very clear and if you have any doubts, always you are welcome to call me back and ask. So they were main focusing upon five-to-six percentage of annual increase or annual growth in the income. Second one, to become self-sufficient and increase the agricultural production in order to meet the need of industry and the growing population. So they given more focus for agricultural growth for the growing population so that they we can be self-sufficient. Third one, to increase major industries like steel, fuel, power and chemical. All these things has to be enhanced the use of our resources for our industry. Then to utilize manpower efficiently and a sustainable employment opportunity also can be developed due to this industrialization. Next one, to bring down the disparities in income and wealth, even even from the second plan onwards, they are trying. So that the inequalities or the imperatives can be, can be resolved among the economical status of the people. In that, the main aims for the health sector during the third five-year plan was improvement of environmental sanitation, then safe water supply, control of communicable disease, then organization of institutional facilities for providing care, especially training of medical and health personals and provision of services like MCH, health education and various nutritional programs and high priority was given for family planning. So these were all the main aims for the, towards the health sector during the third five-year plan. Next, let us see the fourth five-year plan, fourth five-year plan was between nineteen sixty-nine to seventy-four. So I hope you can see there is a gap, nineteen sixty-six, we have ended with the third five-year plan. And from sixty-six to sixty-nine, we were not having few plannings, it was all annual plan. Because maybe during that time, as I have told, war has happened, maybe the government, government problems has happened, the governmental changes, so due to any of the political reason or any of the instability reason during in between, sometimes we had this annual plans also. So the fourth five-year plan was between nineteen sixteen-nine to nineteen seventy-four. So in the fourth five-year plan, they have provided, we can see four-hundred-and-thirty-three-point-fifty-three crore money especially assigned for health and family planning in the fourth five-year plan. So that much of importance they have given especially for the family planning even from the fourth five-year plan onwards. So let us see what are the general objectives. So the general objectives were first one, to enhance stability and self-reliance in various productive activities of the country. So various productive activities already we have seen, so all the industrial areas, steel, everything. So in that, we need the stability and self-reliance. Then to emphasize on productive activity principally on agricultural production. Because see, our population is increasing very fastly. So same way, we have to increase the production of agriculture also, otherwise there will be food scarcity in future. So it was also one of the general objective. Next one wants to enhance the technological advancement in the industrial activities and enterprises. So in the industry, they were looking for the technological advancement to extend the help to small producers and increase job opportunities for present and future. So for the present and for the future also, they were looking for the good job opportunities to make supplies available, eventually all the supplies should be available, all the raw materials for all the industries. Then to include the Punjab Raj Institution for Planning Towards Integrated Cooperative Structure and Building Health and Economic Democracy. So this thing you can highlight and remember. Then the health-related objectives, so what were the health-related objectives? First one, to eradicate the communicable disease. So from the time, from the beginning onwards, we had various communicable problems. So. So that was one of the objectives. Second one, to establish the primary health centers in each community development block. So each CDB, what is CDB? Community Development Block. It should have the primary health centers, then family planning programs more emphasized, then expand medical and nursing education and training of paramedical personals to meet the technical manpower requirements. So medical, nursing education. Fourth five-year plan, they were emphasizing on this medical, nursing education, more on family planning and even I have told the Punjab Raj Institution word, these three words they have used in fourth five-year plan. You have to emphasize and you have to underline, make your own notes. Only this main highlighting things you make the notes, no need to write everything, then only you will be. So if you want, you can write no issues, but you have to make your own running notes by emphasizing these keywords, how you will be remembering each of this five-year plans. Next is the fifth five-year plan. So in the fifth five-year plan, it was from nineteen seventy-four to nineteen seventy-eight. So after the fourth five-year plan, we have the next one, fifth five-year plan. So it has really focused on employment and poverty alleviation and justice. So they were more focusing upon employment than reduction of poverty or elimination of poverty than on the justice factors. The plan continued to pay attention on self reliance in agricultural protection and defense. So they they were looking highly to be very stable and should be self reliance. Mainly two sectors, agricultural protection and the defense. Defense means I hope you can understand our army, navy and air force. So these areas and agricultural production so that the uh the national security can be maintained. And the national food system also can be maintained. Uh so this is about the fifth five year plan, so let us see what are the major objectives. So in the major objectives, we can see that uh the first one is um elimination of poverty. So elimination of poverty and second one was um realization and attainment of self reliance. So as I have told, the same thing again they are emphasizing major objective and the fifth five year plan day poverty. So you have to remember that word, poverty and self reliance, they were looking in fifth five year plan. Next is sixth five year plan. So the sixth five year plan wa- was uh having a two year of delay. Uh it was from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty five. So because fifth five year plan. Nineteen seventy eight. Uh why? Because uh it is clearly written, uh there was a um there was a plan was uh rejected uh by the. Uh Murarji Desai government. So that's what I have told you, if there is a governmental change or if there is any political instability, we will not be able to have a five year plan. So in between, uh some gaps came. So after seventy eight, we have, we had the sixth five year plan in nineteen eighties. So in nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty five, we had the sixth five year plan. So in that, it has started in April first nineteen eighty, which continued till March. So the sixth plan aimed at rapid industrial development specifically in the area of informative technology. So information technology more emphasize. So the family planning activities geared up in order to prevent our population. See again and again, all these things we we know that. The same way, number five year plan. It was very clear, the main things they were mainly focusing upon. Population reduction, industrialization, supply of equipments, agriculture, sanitation, uh water supply. These things, the same things are going to continue, the only thing they are trying to improve. Because we have a very good number of, we are, we are a very big country, we have a very good population. Uh so it is not very easy that within five year, everything will be corrected and we will become developed country like Europe, no. So we have our own limitations, so looking into the resources developing side by side. So here in the sixth five year plan also, they were focusing mainly into the family planning activities and the industrial development. Uh in industrial development, they were more fa- fo- focusing on information technology. So let us see what are the general objectives. First one, to uh bring down poverty and unemployment rate progressively. Uh so they they would try to uh bring down the poverty and unemployment rate. Then saving and development of indigenous sources of energy with efficiency. So uh like indigenous system, the traditional system of energy like um uh sunlight, all this, then windmills. All these things they were trying to bring back or they are trying to make in order to save. Then progressive reduction of regional disparities to enhance the technological benefit. See the technology should reach all the periphery regions. Even now we can see that urban and the cities, they are more focused for internet, all the technological I T facilities. In the rural area, we have less number of towers, we have less number of range problems. We have uh even only two two G, even uh reaching into the periphery and the tribal rural areas. So these things they were looking into, then population control policies, um then procedures towards voluntary. Acceptance of the small family, no, so they were more focusing upon small family, no, population control programs. Then promote, protect and improve ecological and environmental assets through harmonious short and long term goals. Again, the the harmonious use or the economical or the ecological and uh environmental use of the resources. Protect that resources and improve that. So this is what we can see in the sixth five year plan. So the next point is um continuing with the sixth five year plan, then promote the involvement of people uh from all uh. From all sections of the society through education, communication and other strategies of the industries. So they were trying to improve the uh people uh from all the sections of the society through education. So that then only there will be a uh a educational development. So these all were the various objectives put forward by the sixth five year plan. So let us see what were the objectives they have mainly focused for on health related. So because I have told, five year plan is overall development, we are more focusing especially on the health. So what were the health aspect? First one, increasing the accessibility, uh accessibility of health services to rural area. Correcting the regional imbalances. Further development of referral services by removal of deficiencies in the district subdivisional hospitals. Intensification of the control or eradication of communicable diseases, especially malaria and smallpox. Qualitative improvement in the education and training of health personals. And development of referral services by providing specialist attention to common diseases in rural areas. So see, it is very clearly uh we can see that uh during this um we were, we were looking the sixth five year plan. So in the sixth five year plan, it was very clearly mentioned that the health related objectives, they were more focusing uh into the rural areas. In order to remove the regional imbalances, all the areas should have the um same thing, equality. And they want to uh more develop the referral system, especially the district, sub district levels. And they were, they were uh more focusing on eradication of communicable diseases, especially malaria, smallpox. You have to remember smale- malaria and smallpox, the word came in sixth five year plan. During that time, that epidemic epidemics was going on, so they they would, they would like to eradicate that. Then they were more focusing upon the education and training of the health personals. Because in order to eradicate this malaria, smallpox, everything, we all health sector has to work coordinatedly. So the health personals, they need high training for that, so the quality training, then only improvement can happen. Then even the referral system development also, they were more focusing. Especially giving more attention towards the common diseases in the rural areas. Uh so I hope it is more than enough for you to today, today's class. So uh by tomorrow's, before tomorrow's class, you all have to make a small note about all this six five year plan. You have to read from this note, uh either you can copy down everything what is written here because even in this textbook also very clearly only points has been given. So from that even, I know that it will be difficult for you to buy hurt everything. So you have to make a small note by your own so that how you will be remembering each of this. So from the seventh five year plan, we will be discussing in the coming class. Thank you students.